You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the January thirteenth, twenty twenty three meeting of the Michigan City Commission on the social status of African American males. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Okay, Happy New Year, everyone. Thank you for um tuning in to the monthly meeting of Michigan City Commission of Social Status of African American Males. Today is Friday, June thir- I mean, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Oh, Friday the thirteenth, so we got to make sure we don't make this a bad meeting because this better be janky. Okay, you guys, uh, we here. Happy New Year. Everybody doing well?
Well.
That's a blessing. Can we stand for the Pledge of Legions? Okay, that's great. Well, as you know, everyone knows up here, this is an important meeting today. Um, we all have a lengthy agenda, but we do have nominations and elections to take care, take care of today. Um, we almost have a full board. I think we maybe Benson, maybe just one, not even one, are we? Are we missing anybody? Miss up?
More.
More? And Miss, oh, Miss Connie made it. Hogan? Okay. I think he pre-warm me. He would either be late or couldn't make it. I just didn't send an email out. Okay, with nominations, we got to get this out the way real fast before we continue the meeting so we can have our elected officials doing their according to duties and responsibilities. Now, we're gonna go um the same way that we any other board will go with start with the president on down from vice and down down. Even though that we don't have a secretary to record this, they can go on Zoom or meeting or whatever and get the meeting to record it, you know, uh this minutes or whatever from, okay. You got a question?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, um, can we wait till Ms. Benny come back down?
Oh, yes, yes.
Other copies of the agenda?
Yes, bring you guys a copy of the agenda, that's cool. So until she makes it back, um, do anyone uh have anything special to share about Happy New Years? Anybody make any babies? Happy New Year, baby. I gotta be joyful, man. You know, we always got to be joyful inside and pure at heart and have a genuine uh a genuine intentions, you know, that's a great thing. That's a girl. I'm glad you can make it, brother. I know you make that call to me. You said me to fly just, I'm gonna struggle it out. You did.
I did.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, is Miss Benny coming with the agenda so we can bring you and continue? Thank you, Miss Benny. Commissioner Benny, I have one. Uh, Mia, um, I need. There we go, you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benny. Okay, I'll get these papers lined up and I'm gonna go in a uh uniform order. We're not gonna do anything that's that's different than usual. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna open up the floor for nominations and usually nomination starts off with a
Roll call, sir.
Oh, roll call, bingo. We need to do a roll call, make sure we had a call and everyone's here. Um, right now, we have the secretary, but um if she would like to do a roll call, I would like to have you two or Miss Benny. Miss Benny, you mind doing roll call? Thank you. Present. Present.
Sorry. Oh, present. Did you get the other ones? Commissioner Hurt.
Present.
Commissioner McCormick.
Present.
Commissioner Millsap.
Present.
Commissioner Carroll.
Present.
Commissioner, um, Fly.
Present.
Commissioner Corley.
Corey, Commissioner Lee.
Commissioner Lee, I'm sorry. I apologize. President. Commissioner, uh, Cowley.
Right.
President. Commissioner Benny, President. Uh, Commissioner Johnson.
President. Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. We was open up the floor for nominations.
Do we have a call?
Yes, we have a call. Thank you, sir. We go up the floor right out the gate to President. Anybody have any nominations or considerations for President?
I nominate Mr. Kenny Fly, please.
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination and a second for Kenny Fly. Any more nominations for President? Seeming that there's no more nominations for President, um, I will continue to let Ms. Benny, uh, do a roll call and the vote procedures. Um, can we get the roll call and vote procedures, please, Miss Benny? Commissioner Benny, I just don't have a secretary right now, so.
Commissioner Hurt.
Yep.
Commissioner McCormick.
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Millsap.
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Fly.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Cowley.
Aye.
Commissioner Benny.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye. Okay, great. And um, looks like we got a vote of
We have nine in favor.
Nine in favor, none opposed. I really appreciate your help right now, Ms. Benny, Commissioner Benny. Um, so, right now, I want to say I accept and thank you for the nomination of Vice, I mean, of President. And I'll do my best to fulfill these duties and responsibilities. And just know we all in it together, okay, so if uh um, if I may slip or who may slip, just help out a little bit, okay? Okay, we'd like to open up the floor for Vice Chair. For nominations.
I'd like to nominate Rodney McCormick for Vice.
Second.
A second. Okay, we have a nomination and a second nominated nominated by uh Commissioner Millsap and a second by uh Commissioner Benny. We can do a um vote.
Commissioner Hurt.
Yes.
Commissioner McCormick, aye. Commissioner Millsap.
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Fly.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Cowley.
Aye.
Commissioner Benny, aye. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
We have nine in favor, zero opposed.
Good job, uh, Commissioner Vice President McCormick. Uh, vote, Carrie.
Thank you.
Nine to zero. You have anything or was accept? You accept?
Yes, I accept and I'll thank you and I just do the best I can do. Um, please bear with me if we make mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you, Com- Vice President McCormick now. Okay, we're gonna carry on down to the secretary with this area might be a little fuzzy. So, um, we're gonna try it out. Okay, we got nominations for secretary. Um, can we open the floor for nominations for secretary?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like to nominate if she accept, Ms. Connie.
I second.
I decline.
Okay, Ms. Connie.
Point of order. In order for us to consider people who have not been on the board for one year.
Oh, we just
We have to do a suspension of bylaws. This is one of the reasons that Mr. Mills
Miss Lee, point of order, we didn't realize that. It's no problem. We don't have to keep going to the one that, you know, it's it's okay. You made that established now. Um, okay, she's uh, we're gonna have to nominate someone that's been on for a year or we're gonna have to um amend the bylaws before we can get someone that wants to be a Secretary or Treasurer in that spot. But first, we have to give the nominations up to anyone that's been on the board for a year first. And then if not, we can amend it and um we can go on with someone that's not been here for a year.
Who to suspend the rules if needed.
Second.
Can we get a vote?
Commissioner Hurt.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner McCormick.
Yes.
Commissioner Millsap.
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Fly.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Cowley.
Aye.
Commissioner Benny, aye. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
We have nine favor, zero post, choose.
Okay, we
To suspend the um, the um, membership.
Okay, okay, thank you guys for making this uh social, making it easier for us all. So, okay, we suspended the rules. Now we can go on to the nominations of secretary and with this, these nominations, you don't have to be on for a year. We suspended them rules, so anybody can uh be a secretary whether they've been there on a week or day or five, six years.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Millsap.
Yay, I second.
I respectfully decline because of my uh full plate of uh other items. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay, okay, Miss App, I was banking on you, brother.
Does the person have to be here?
Huh?
Does the person have to be here or shouldn't be here?
Well, as we did in the past, they didn't have to be here, but we have to bank on them accepting it when we come to the next meeting.
Oh, that's fine.
If I may, Mr. Chair, is anyone that's here that would like to be the secretary? And with that being, wait, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, uh, first, let's go ahead and do the nominations and put them in the hot seat and do it like that. Yeah, so we're doing like that, right, Kinko? So we got anybody for nomination for secretary? I'd like to nominate, um well, I think everybody should be involved. I really like the way uh Commissioner Lee had handled the secretary position. She's very diligent and um you know, preview with a lot of things, so it's sad that that might not happen. Are you still gonna remain on the board, Miss Lee?
So, the reason I didn't want to accept a nomination is because my term is up in February.
Right.
So I would only have just this one month in order to be your secretary. I I don't have I will not be reappointed.
Okay.
Or if I am reappointed, I will not accept the appointment. And so I didn't want to leave you all on the lurch, and that's the reason why I announced it last month. And so I think that I appreciate you all vote of confidence.
Well, you did a good job, so we just giving it up.
I'm a serious note takers, but I don't, I I won't be returning to the board and it would be unfair for you all to have the vote again next month.
Okay, so we understood. We have, that was, that was very, very stand-upish. If you know you weren't gonna be here and English says having us going back and forth. Also, what I would do now is leave the nominations open and we can elect someone that's not here and then we just have to hope that they accept when the, on the next meeting. But I would like to pit pass to Hurt and uh Commissioner Hurt don't want to do the commission.
Mr. Johnson?
I de- I decline. Mr. Chair, um, may, can we, I motion to table the appointment of this secretary into everyone is present at the meeting.
I second.
Okay, we get a roll call on that, but I do want to assure we hardly rarely have a whole four panel. Uh, so we might be waiting a long time before everyone is present. Do you want to take that in consideration?
I think it's it's appropriate for us to table this and everybody up here already declined. There's no need to put no one on the hot seat. We need to just move on and and just, better days are are to come.
I agree.
Okay, I'm with that uh Vice President McCormick. That makes sense. So we are tables, table the uh appointment of the secretary, so um
Do we need a roll call on that or no?
Oh, yeah, we get, yeah.
Commissioner Hurt.
Can we get a roll call?
He already said aye. Commissioner McCormick.
Aye.
Commissioner Millsap. Commissioner Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Fly. Commissioner Lee.
I abstain because I don't know who they like to.
We're gonna table it to next month.
Commissioner Cowley.
Aye.
Commissioner Benny, aye. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye. But table in the um appointment of secretary past nine to zero. Um, this will be tabled into next month just to make it aware and for record keeping. So that our next meeting, we'll table it to next month, and if we don't have a full panel next month, we'll just uh go from there and try to see what we can come up with. Can we go on to the appointment nomination of Treasurer?
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Stacy Benning as Treasurer.
Nomination of Stacy Benning by Commissioner Millsap and a second by Commissioner Vice President McCormick. Can we get a roll call vote?
Well, first of all, it's one of, yeah, I initially said to myself that I wasn't going to do it. But because I want the the best interest of this board, this commission, um, to keep moving forward, I will accept it at this time. Um, I think that people need to get out of their own way and no offense to anybody, but I feel like you need to get out of your own way and and step up and take responsibility for some of these positions because we're on here for a reason. So with that being said, I'll accept it at this time on the roll call.
Okay, roll call, uh, start.
Commissioner Millsap.
Aye.
Commissioner, um, McCormick.
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Fly.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Cowley.
Aye.
Commissioner Benny, aye. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
There are nine in favor, zero posts.
We have the vote pass for Treasurer, Commissioner Benny, nine to zero. Um, Commissioner Benny, you accepted. You said already, you have anything you might want to?
No.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Benny. And you did make a great point, not to elaborate, but you guys that's on this board, um, not saying that you have to and it's a a a must, but it it's cool to go ahead and if you're being considered to be nominated and be take that as a privilege and helping us all go on, you know, uh, the extra work is is, you know, if you care a little bit, you know, I don't know. Just sometime we gotta kick in.
And help each other.
Yeah, help each other, so, um, but we got it going on. I want to uh ask Millsap, you sure you still might want to?
Uh, ju- just for the record, you know, when I get involved in something, if I can't put my all into it, then I'm not gonna do it, so uh, my plate is full of that. You all know, so I support whoever.
Right.
So it is what it is.
I tried, I tried to get you, didn't.
I just wanted to say something also is that I decline because my position on this commission is up and up.
You speaking to the microphone?
My commission is, my appointment is up next month also. And so before I commit myself to anything, I need to know if I'm gonna be back on this board or not.
I got you.
So that's why I decline.
Thank you, thank you for the
So with that being said, though, you were considered secretary if you're back?
Perhaps, yes.
Yeah.
See, there you go. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, President Fly, I think a lot of us feel that way because my appointments are up in February.
Yeah, we kind of got behind a uh eight bar on this one, uh, Commissioner Johnson and our fellow members here. Um, the appointments would have been satisfied and done of city council would have uh went on head and realized the urgency of our board continuing on peacefully also, but they tabled it and gonna do our our appointments, uh I mean, next month or whenever they do it, they might just make the appointments and do it the next month and next month while we still sitting here, you know, waiting for. So we're gonna be in shambles on that tip at least. And I'm not saying this to be discouraging and saying, putting the blame on city council totally, but it would have been cool to really been able to know who was gonna be here when they had the opportunity to elect or make their nominations for social status. But that's either here or there because we all in it together and we gonna, we gonna be okay. Come between your agenda, yes, sir?
Let me say this, uh, because that was some confusing uh with the appointment of Minority Help. Uh, when they looked at it, that they was confusing Ms. Allen with me.
Oh, they were.
And uh, her time was up. So in in the meanwhile of hearing that, uh, I made it an assurance to get the next letter to the clerk. So the clerk can have it and on the day uh that the clerk received my letter, uh, and I should have brought it today. Uh, uh, she said to me, Mr. Johnson, don't worry about what you heard, uh, everything clear. Uh, your place is already in place. So that's why I had to make that statement because uh the confusion that was going on.
I understand that, Commissioner Johnson. That's, so what you're saying is your appointment started the time you were appointed and not the uh remainder of Commissioner Allen. Right. Well, oh, Commissioner Allen, because her commission was already done and so you got a fresh slate. So I hear what you're saying. Okay, brother. Um, McCormick, I seen you down there, Commissioner McCormick. Did you still have your light ready?
I just want to say, uh, to everybody that's viewing this, um, I can't blame this on the city council, the mayor, or anyone. You have to fill out an application to be on this board. If you want to be a mayor's appointment, go to the mayor's office, fill out a application. All you had to do is check a box, say what party you affiliated with and sign your name or any interest that you have. And it's the same for the the um, the city council. Um, as I stated before, I think there's uh, we had individuals in our, in our community who think that, um what we're doing is not that significant. We shouldn't fight for it. Um, it's insignificant. Anytime we can help one another and improve our status and help others along the way, it will never be insignificant for me.
Right.
And those people that use that comment, it should be a shame of itself. But I hope we find and go encourage other people to come and join. And um, I'm I'm pretty sure Mike Jones will be joining us and um eighteen-year veteran of the Sheriff Department. And hopefully whoever comes on here, take whoever's spot, they just do the best they can do without controversy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miss, Commissioner Miss App.
Mr. Chair, uh, with that being said, reference to city council, uh, have you been notified where our liaison will be in two thousand twenty-three?
No, no, we haven't been notified of anything other than uh, they weren't gonna, they didn't make our nominations yet. I mean, uh
Okay, so we don't, we don't know where our liaison is with the council at this time.
Point of order. Uh, so the city council listed the incumbents. And there was no changes, but they didn't go forward without on the agenda. And so it's still listed as Ms. Tillman.
Okay. But it was clear that Ms., I I I don't wanna, yeah, I don't want to be expected lady. So, um, you right, Mr. Miss App, we don't have, what we do as of now, but oh, a little following, but I did want to mention this real fast. It would be discouraging if anyone lay with our board, our board is insignificant. I mean, I I'm gonna let that go, but I will hope no one said that. And I come out here in this cold weather on my scooter, traveling down here in the snow and rain. And then they say it's insignificant. That'd be a strike against a smack in my face, you know? Okay, you guys, we're gonna continue with the agenda. Uh, we don't have long. Okay, next on the agenda, we got uh the reading of the mission statement, which I don't never have or on the phone. Miss App, you premeditated. You have on your phone? You have a hot rod? Brother Hurt.
Who's not here today?
You might get. Thank you, Miss Lee, Commissioner Lee. Commissioner Lee has got to re- revamp our, I mean, uh, read our mission statements. Oh, you don't have none, no search? Okay, no problem.
Of the mission statement for this.
Second. Second roll call vote on that?
Commissioner Hurt.
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick.
Aye.
Commissioner Millsap.
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Fly.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
I abstain.
Commissioner Cowley.
Commissioner.
I abstain. Uh, Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
We have uh eight in favor, one to put the abstention.
Eight in favor, one of, oh, I mean, uh, one abstain. Okay, we continue on with our agenda. So we have December twenty-two meeting minutes. We want to review that. I hope you guys did.
To accept.
Second. Yep, that's cool too. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Hurt.
Aye.
Commissioner Millsa, uh, McCormick.
All right, yeah.
Sorry, Commissioner Millsap.
I just said, yeah, we do.
Commissioner Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Fly.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Cowley.
Aye.
Commissioner Benny, aye. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
We have nine in favor, zero post.
Nine in favor, zero opposed. So we accept December twenty-two minutes and um we did have the treasurer's report done PDF, uh, treasury report of Commissioner Benny.
Yes, I submitted that last week. Uh, we have an ending balance of six thousand ninety-eight dollars and ninety-two cents.
Motion to accept this.
Second. Great.
Discussion.
Discussion? And um sometimes just to get this out real fast, you guys, uh, whenever someone has a point of order, when you say point of order, just to all of us, including me. When you say point of order, please be waited to give the floor. Just don't say point of order, start speaking. Let me acknowledge the point of order. So we won't be cutting people off in mid-sentence. You know, I think that's, you know, kind of be respectful somewhat of each other's. But you will be able to grant your point of order, it's just not right away while a person is right in the middle of saying the word. But that's great. Okay, so what what we got going on, Miss B-, uh, Commissioner Lee, what was you saying?
So I, I had a question about the donation from the La Porte County Council to the Criminal Justice and the Educational Subcommittee. Now, while it is important that we do go out and receive funds, any monies that we discuss or move in this commission has to be a commission vote. So before we accept the treasurer's report to have the money in our treasury, we have to accept the earmarked money from the La Porte Council. Yes, we do.
Point of order.
I'm not your authoritarian, but that's the rule for money.
Okay, we have a point of order. Uh, we can have Vice President, Commissioner McCormick, please, uh, fill your point of order, sir.
We're suing to our bylaws. Once we go out and anybody, any one of us can go collect money. The lawyer already came here and explained that to us. Once you get the funds or or anything earmarked or wherever the funds gonna go, they must go to the controller's office. Now, what we're gonna use the money for, like, this is gonna be used for a field trip. Some of it's gonna be used for a field trip. Now, we then we have to ask for permission from the rest of the board to bring everybody up to speed. Um, but just to to accept the money from the, to give it over to the clerk's office, there's no vote needed. And if we need to move forward, Mr. Fly, just wait for we get a legal opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you guys for your uh, your interest and your informative information about that. So what we got going on here is we got some money in the bank basically, and we finna use it for field trip and um whether uh
Well, we're not, excuse me, point of order.
Some of it.
We're still back at the treasurer's report.
Yeah, back at the
Report balance again is six thousand ninety-eight dollars and ninety-two cents.
There's motion on the floor.
Yes, but the point of order that I, the point of order was about her report. And the reason for it is, is that the monies was gotten from the council. It was never brought before a full board ever to receive the money. So ever. And we ha- it's a mo- it's a procedural issue.
Okay, let's
So asked, so we can get a ruling from our attorney and that's fine, but we are still talking about the treasurer's report itself. And so we can, can we table it till after we receive information from our attorney regarding what our sets need to be?
There's my, hold on, hold on, you guys, hold on, you guys. That's why I said we ain't gonna be flirting out everybody. So what we're gonna do here is, we're gonna leave that, all of that to wherever it gotta go. Uh, me and layman terms, I say call the police. But right now, we got this money, we accepted this money. Do you guys want to accept the money? Just say, oh, yay, right quick. As this is a board, we don't need the roll vote.
Yay.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, it's understood, yay. Now, all the other stuff, y'all catch up with that later. We accepting the money, uh, the treasury report. Anybody, we all accept the treasury report, just say yay.
Wait for discussion. Anybody else have any discussion?
Any more discussion? Seems there is no discussion. Uh, except the treasury report.
Can we call in a roll call?
Roll call for treasury report acceptance.
Commissioner, uh, Hurt.
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick.
Aye.
Commissioner Millsap.
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Fly.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee. I abstain. Commissioner Cowley.
Aye.
Commissioner Benny, aye. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
We have eight in favor, one abstention.
Eight in favor, one insistence to accept the treasury report. Okay, good job, you guys. We got some money in the bank. Let's do good by it. Next on the agenda, we have new business, which is listed none.
Yes.
But if you guys have anything you want to say about new business, carry along. We have Commissioner Vice President McCormick wanting to say something.
Yes, we, um, the Subcommittee for Criminal Justice and Education met, um so I have to bring this motion to the table. We have, uh, prior to Mr. Johnson, Mr. Hurt and Ms. Lee coming part of our board, we already voted to um, to go collect money and earmark it and do things. We already, we already agreed to do the field trip. All this stuff is already agreed to prior to our discussion today. Um, I'm gonna let Ms. Benny speak, but I'm gonna move now that, well, we approve not to exceed eighteen hundred dollars a field trip to the De Sable Museum.
I second. That was a motion, uh, Vice President McCormick to accept the
Yes, unless we only have discussion and Ms. Benny want to add more to it, but yeah, I have that Yeah, I have that motion.
I'll, I'll wait and add it down at the uh.
Okay, well, I second.
Report. I have a question. I thought when we first took this vote on this money, that the four thousand dollars was designated for the field trip.
Right, it is earmarked for the filter. The whole four thousand, yes.
The money is earmarked to help. You wanna.
Go ahead.
The money is earmarked for the, for the young, um, for males in our community to go on, on field trips. We're not gonna use the whole four thousand on this particular trip, and then it will be more for the other trips to go on. Uh, sponsored by the Subcommittee of Criminal Justice and Education. Uh, that's all it is to it. And we did agree on that, Ms. Conley, you correct.
Yeah, we did agree. Yes, I was trying to make sure because I thought at the time, that's a lot of money for one field trip.
No, no, it's not for one.
Right, thank you, Commissioner Conley. Okay, bringing that up.
And one last thing, Ms. Conley, any money that we don't, we don't spend by state statute. We are going to give right back to the controller's office with, um, with the treasury report showing what we spent and what we did not spend. Anything that has, anything that must be spent, you must have receipts for it. Thank you.
And we're gonna spend it.
And I can elaborate on that further when we get down to our criminal justice report.
Okay, great guy, great job. Um, can we continue on to the motion on the floor? And I, I second it.
Commissioner Hurt.
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick.
Aye.
Commissioner Millsap.
Aye.
Commissioner Carol.
Aye.
Commissioner Fly.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee. I abstain because I don't know what the motion is. Of us accepting. The, can you go ahead and, and restate?
Can you repeat your, um, motion, Commissioner McCormick? Can you still repeat your motion, though? Can we guys, can we come up, can we, can we?
The motion is to, motion is to, uh, take four, uh, out of the four thousand. Eight, eighteen, eighteen hundred dollars, not, not to exceed eighteen hundred dollars. Anything that's over. Will go back to anything that's, that we don't spend, we'll go back to the controller's office for the field trip to Chicago, Illinois, to the Desaba Museum. Uh, that will include of, I believe, five chaperones, and I believe we gotta. We gotta earmark also twenty, twenty individuals. Thank you.
Thank you for the repeateness of that. Now, can we carry on to our vote?
Commissioner Lee. I abstain from the vote. Commissioner Conley. Aye. Commissioner Benning, aye. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
We have eight in favor, uh, one abstention.
Eight in favor, one abstention to go to the Desaba Museum. Five chaperones, not take seat eighteen hundred?
No, ju- just the monies part. We haven't got.
That's what this motion was, eighteen hundred.
To not exceed eighteen hundred.
Hey, you guys, y'all get y'all mics on while y'all talking? So I, I don't know why this is starting to be a little confusing. And if I'm starting to be confused, I'm sure the public is starting to be confused. Okay, this motion is for eighteen hundred. To go to the Sabo Museum, not to exceed eighteen hundred. I'm just asking my correct.
That's right.
And then the motion was for five chaperones and some.
What?
No, she said. It's not to exceed, it's for the field trip, not to exceed. We voted and passed.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to make it clarity because it seemed like we, we still was fumbling. And one thing it is, is an understanding is the best policy, so we don't have to reback, retract stuff. We can get it, make sure it's all clear to everyone. Okay, so, um, did Ms. Benny still wanna elaborate on that?
I'll, I'll go ahead, just for sake of clarification, Mr. McCormick made the motion to not exceed eighteen hundred dollars for us to agree. Um, for the field trip. Um, since we're talking about it, the specifics are. That we will not exceed eighteen hundred dollars, um, for the, um, field trip. We are looking at five chaperones. Um, and approximately twenty youths. Um, my criminal justice subcommittee report for December was submitted. The specifics are on there. Um, we met Wednesday, January the fourth. We had a discussion. We came up with some. Tentative, uh, agreements. Um, the chaperones at this time, we're looking at Chair, Commissioner McCormick, uh. Co-chair, Commissioner Stacy Benning, President, Commissioner Kenny Fly, Commissioner Tony Cox, and Commissioner Dwayne Hurt. Um, again, approximately twelve youths, which would be provided, um, through multiple referrals, through Fly High Youth. Pastor Hertz Youth Services and from other committee members, um, referral sources. Transportation, we will be going by way of the South Shore Train Line. Um, we're looking at late February, early March, tentatively. That may have to be adjusted depending on the, um, the weather. Uh, we will provide the cost of the transportation and admission and, as well as lunch, um, for the participants. Um, I had the specific pricing broken down, um, per adult and child and, um. Youth for the transportation, museum, and food and drink. And, um, as he stated, we're looking at, um, I put down there approximately fifteen hundred of the earmarked funding to be. Um, used, but we'll say no more than eighteen hundred. Um, and regardless of whatever we spend, we will get receipts for everything. And the, any leftover monies will go back to the controller's office for further, uh, moving forward for further reimbursement for. Um, future field trips or events.
Ms. Benny?
Yes.
Uh, is there any room for late, uh, registration or is it closed?
No, um, as far as what? I'm sorry.
Attending, uh, field trip.
For.
Going on the field trip.
For attending for the youth or?
Youth, youth.
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
No, if you have someone, we're gonna, um, be composing, um, a fi- uh. A permission slip.
Right.
Um, and if you have a name, get that submitted to me as soon as you can.
And there's an age requirement or grade requirement?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mister Millsap, I assure you and all the rest of the, the public, this is not our first, this is not gonna be our first field trip. It ain't gonna be our last field trip, and we're gonna keep this rolling. As long as we keep getting that money coming in, they keep calling me to ask me to come get money, I'm gonna keep going to get it, bring it back, and we gonna keep on spending it for our people. That's what I'm here for, so.
I wanna add on to that with you, uh, Vice President McCormick, is that we are promoted and encouraged to go find funding for our board. You know, that isn't something that's prohibited. We, we are encouraged to go find money and funds to help us out or. You know, whatever we need to do to try to help our board be successful and to be more involved with our community. So there's no, no wrong in that. As long as we do it procedural, do the things accordingly, there's no problem with that. Okay, we can continue.
I have, I have a question about the, the Subcommittee Report, um, and so. Five adults, twenty youths, and it's, so you, you have a ti- a tentative listed. Um, for the cost of a student ticket, um, as ten dollars. Might I recommend, um, because the Sabo membership for the entire year is only thirty dollars for a student? And so, can I recommend that it? That we gift that, then that includes that day and future days for the twenty students that we took. Since we're already going and spending the money, it's a, it's a few additional more dollars. And it's still within the budget guidelines because we got the four thousand dollars, even if we spent one hundred dollars on each. Child, that we, that's forty kids we can take, right? And so, why not give them a membership that they can use in the future?
Mister Chair, to answer that question.
Yes, you may.
I've already tried, I've already inquired about all the memberships. We have yet to hear from them back. There has been four emails sent out to make sure that we can get this done. I was promised that they will probably throw in memberships for us. They, I have been waiting for the phone call back, our email back, and if that do come about, it's gonna be done. Thank you.
Okay, great, great.
Thank you for sharing, sir, but I mean, it's in your plan, so it wasn't listed as tentative, even to. Points, words for sharing.
Point of order, everyone. We gonna be good on that. We gotta understand, we gonna possibly get a membership if they get a contact back. But if not, we still gonna fulfill the trip. Myself personally, I don't think we should get a membership. I don't think the kids would be privy with transportation, who gonna take them, and all of those, so I think it would be a waste. Because they wouldn't be able to get there and nobody's gonna take them. Um, I think there's other places that, other places that we can have field trips at. And use the money for that, that extra money for different places, where we don't just get stuck on one, uh, field trip assignment. But next, uh, on the agenda, oh, Ms. Benny.
I, I just wanna, um, piggyback on that to say that I'm in agreement with that, um. There's all kinds of ways that you can look at things. These, this is the way that we looked at it. Um, like Mr. McCormick said. We're not, this is not gonna be our last field trip. Um, if we are able to get a membership for all the youth, so be it, fine. Um, but if not. Um, we know that we are moving forward. As you stated, Mr. Fly, um, some of the kids may not be privy to even utilize that membership. And that will be a waste of money. So you can look at it any way that you wanna look at it. Right now, this is a concerted effort that we all put in. This is the plan of tentative plan of action that we put in, and this is what we're looking at. We ask for your support on this, and we're gonna keep it moving.
Thank you, Treasurer, Commissioner Benny.
I have a question.
Miss, uh, Miss Conley has a question.
I know this says this is a tentative pricing, but did you also look into the fact that we can get like a group rate? And that was the breakdown for the eleven dollars for the students and ten for the adults?
Okay, yes, that's great.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, Miss Conley, Commissioner Con. Hey, we can move on with, um, with the agenda. There's no more information need to be said on that, um, issue of treasury report and old, new business. Anyone else has anything to bring up on new business?
Mister Chair, I don't think we should do, I don't know if we supposed to do this now. I'm kinda new to this as well, but we have to, um. We have to go to the appointments of the subcommittees. This is a new year, and we don't know if who's gonna retain, and I believe it's your, you're privy. To put whoever you wanna put in these positions. So I think we need to get that over with in new business, uh, Mr. Millsap. Am I correcting that?
We got old business and then after new business.
Oh, that's not new business?
We not, we're in, uh, old business now.
We still in new business?
Yeah.
Now, do we wait to wait down to committees?
Okay, that, that way.
Okay, all right. So we'll wait to the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Millsap, no problem.
Yep, Miss, I've been on here for a long time. If anybody know, he would know.
That's right.
Okay, we move on, on with the, uh. The agenda, and we going along accordingly, so we got twenty minutes. Okay, we go to old business. We don't have anything listed, but is, anyone feel free to. Speak on anything that's old business, hopefully not too discriminatory or too retaliating. And we, you know, cuz, um, this wouldn't be the place to have, uh, rebuttals and arguments, so. Well, let's get it going on. We have other business, anyone bring up? Commissioner Lee, I see your hand, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much. So as we know, um, that for March, a full report from this committee is due. To the City Council. And I put together several minute packets, and they include. Most of the information that we will need for the year, but please make sure that your new secretary goes through. Previous agendas or views the previous, um. Access television, um, viewings of this meeting to find out what we did not cover. So everything is covered, um, for the new year. Thank you.
Thanks for your advice. That was good consideration. Make sure we do that. Um, anybody else under old business while we, while we open? The door is open? Okay, that's good. We going along good and smooth.
Mister Chair, reference to old business, are we, so that we're all on the same page, we have everybody that's supposed to be. Making slots on our seats, on our commission has been filled, and we're waiting for expiration dates, correct?
Right.
Just so we're all on the same page.
Yes, yes, we, we waiting for the expiration dates and, um, everything else you just said, Mr. Commissioner Will, sir.
Subcommittee.
Discussion. So as your previous secretary, I received an email from the clerk's office. Because I was asking about the new nominations, because they were slated to be on the City Council for last week, and they didn't make it. So I asked what the next steps were from the city clerk, and they said that once the city council, um, approves them. Then a letter has to be sent out from the appointing authority to the city clerk. So we wanna make sure that that second step by everyone's appointing authority is accepted, um.
That's correct. That's correct, Commissioner Lee. I think we had a couple letters sent to them already. I checked in the email.
I was just gonna say.
Yeah, some are being fulfilled, letters are being sent out by their appointed authority, but you are correct, they do have to have a letter. Reassign, I'm gonna say, and they gonna fulfill the mission.
Right, and, and the City Council is not until Tuesday, so. Cuz it's back on the agenda for Tuesday.
Oh, it is? I didn't know that. That's a good thing then.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, can we go to subcommittees yet, or do anybody got more old business? Okay, good job, you commissioners. I love this smoothness. We go to subcommittees, to entiements, we have education. Do we have a report for education? I'm on education too, but I'm not the chair. I don't think we, uh, assigned a chair yet, did we?
At this time, Mister, uh, Fly, uh, knowing that this is on the, uh, the agenda for the City Council. To add people, or some people might not come back, I move the table, the appointments of all subcommittees until our next meeting. Gender of our agenda to the next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion attainable and a second by Commissioner Benny. Uh, we get a roll call vote.
Commissioner Hurt.
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee. Aye. Commissioner Millsap. Aye. Commissioner Fly.
Aye.
Commissioner Conley.
Aye.
Commissioner Benny, aye. Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
We have nine in favor, zero opposed.
Nine in favor, zero opposed. So yes, unfortunately, everything is have to be set back. But we, we all in it together, so we're not gonna downplay anyone, but once we do get everybody in position, we all in popping. Okay, we gonna skip all sub, can we have discussions on subcommittee now? Any discussion about education right now?
Let's just wait, so.
She just go straight to public comment.
Okay, no problem. I got you guys, so, uh, I personally wanna say something about the subcommittee, but it's not actually a subcommittee, but I do wanna say that, um. With education, I do wanna speak on some, whether it ain't about no paperwork. I wanna say with educa- education. There's something that's going on right now with the Michigan City Area Schools that's kinda really deep in us. And it's starting to be, um, worrying.
Point of order. We have people, I believe, that are waiting to speak. I think we need to go to public comment, then commissioner comment, and then we can wrap this up.
Well, we have fifteen minutes, and I'd like to finish my statement of what I was saying, and we're not pressed on time by five and three minutes. I see Tommy up there, he's always there in access to Fort County. We not budgeted on time, so like I was saying, if I may.
Can I make a comment?
Well, I would like to finish.
Go, go ahead, Commissioner, President Fly.
Yes, like I established, the point of order was not to cut people off, the point of order is to be reckoned with. And, uh, I was saying about the Michigan City Area Schools was something I was gonna speak about with always, uh. We getting overloaded with sending kids to the AK Smithson Career Center. For, uh, the remainder of their educational, oh. Parts of the education being there, and most of them being expelled and having to go there. I think that, that we all need to start, uh. Paying more close attention to the school board and what's going on at the school board, so as I would mention last before. Meeting with Commissioner McCormick. Also, with education, we have a, um. What I was gonna say, lost my train of thought. Okay, we get past education, we gonna go to criminal justice. I wanna speak on something about criminal justice. On criminal justice, we have this, this, this issue that's going on, it's called gang activity. With these kids out in the neighborhood in the streets. What's going on right now? I don't know if it's going unnoticed or not, but if you look in the paper every time. A gang of youth gets in, gets in trouble or just get pulled over or be hanging together. Whether they're family, cousins, or whether they're just friends, they're being labeled as gang activity, and that's a felony. I mean, it's a level six, F-six. And so I think that is something that. I don't, we can't make a difference in that, but it need to be some attention brought to that. That's a new charge they run up. And start giving them juveniles, and it's been, um, hackling, because every time a juvenile get arrested. That charge is always tagged on it, on it with it, whether they were with a gang or not. That, that charge is always included criminal gang activity. And, uh, they considering hanging with your relatives or with your friends and, and bunches is gang activity, I think that's. And uh they considering hanging with your relatives or with your friends and and bunches is gang activity, I think that's discriminatory. And I think it's right, and needs to be brought to it some attention to it, you know, um I don't know what type of attention it needs to be brought to, but one of the start of the attention is right here, and um they need to hear me clear. All these kids is not gang activity, I don't even think they know what a gang is for real, I don't think they have no literature, I don't think they got no commandments, they don't have no no people, you know, um that's really forcing them and addressing them to go out and do missions as a gang. They're just hanging together and probably did did maybe a crime if it was a crime, but who's the saves for gang activity? This caused them to do that crime, that's an extensive charge, and that can look bad on your record going going forward. That's all I want to bring up on that, and I want to get that out, and now we can go on to uh anything next, you saying Commissioner Benny, you want to interject with a point of order?
No.
Okay. Anyone else have a discussion?
Public comment, please.
Hey, good afternoon, this is Tommy Colavick.
Tommy, yeah, I haven't been addressed yet, we gonna get to you, okay?
I'm sorry.
Okay, we get to public comment, uh was we going to good or order first, or to the public comment, I on the on here, it says good of order on the agenda. I'd like to just continue on with the agenda with the good of order, with the commissioners roundtable, then public comment and adjournment. Do we have good of order with the commissioner roundtable?
I have nothing.
I have nothing to say.
Commissionally, I just wanted to let everyone know, if you're interested in filing um and to run for office, there's a declaration of candidacy um form that needs to be filled out, and it does go to LaPorte. And I have information, and I'll make it available for it to be online at the social status, it is a twen- it's a twenty twenty-three Indiana election calendar published by the Indiana Election Division, and it simply states the deadlines for running for office um and all the paperwork that's available, it's a quick process, there was actually a training that was held in the Emergency um Operations Center um co-chair by the Legal Women Voters, and there's also a list of twenty twenty-three city and uh town elections. City of LaPorte, City of Michigan City, the mayor, the clerk, the treasurer. City Council wards for Michigan City, wards one, two, three, four, five, six and three at large positions. Long Beach is the clerk and the treasurer and town council, five at large. Michiana Shores is clerk treasurer, uh town council, five at large. And there is a form that I also will make available, um if people are interested, please do run for public office. We need everyone to be involved in every single level of our community to make it a better place.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee, for your roundtable, anyone else wanna speak on our roundtable?
Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would like to make reference to the planned uh field trip to the Sabo Museum. I think it's uh it shows that the commission is moving forward to doing what ours um code of ethics is referenced to. So let's not let the the procedural cloud of whether or not it was done properly to receive the funds. But the field trip itself should be a plus.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, Commissioner Millsap, that's a great job we did, anyone else with this, was you done with Commissioner? Oh, my favorite, Pastor Carol, we pass you.
Yeah, I I'm used to that. I just wanna wish everyone a a happy new year, and may God richly bless uh all of our commissioners and uh all of Michigan City area, and may the hand of protection be upon all of us. And that's all I have to say, God bless you.
We love your encouragement. Go down to another commissioner comment, anybody have any commissioner row- roundtable left?
Yes.
Commissioner McCormick, brother.
I wanna thank uh Mr. Millsap for his comments, and again, as usual, Pastor Carol, it's good seeing you whenever you here. Whatever sickness you going through, or if you going through a sickness, um we will continue to pray for you and and hope that everything work out, and I hope you continue to pray for us, as you've been saying that you have, um. Yes, and 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 I just wanna say, I wanna thank the LaPorte County uh commissioners for nominating me or placing me on the Community Correction Board, um some of you may not know that. I've been placed on the Community Correction Board, and I thought Ms. Millsap was gonna mention about Ms. Benny. Um yeah, I'm gonna let you get back to that one, and also I was placed on the Triangle um Transit uh Board also as well, and um both of those things are good things, and I look forward to working on Community Correction, keeping criminal justice, taking it, taking what we know here over there and bringing it to the county, thank you.
Congratulations on your appointment, Commissioner Vice President McCormick.
Mr. Chair, can I piggyback on that, because there was something that I was gonna add on. And I'd like to congratulate one of our board members, Stacy, for being put on the Tourism Board. Uh that's a very, very effective and important board in our community. And I think that we have someone who's at the table now that can add to their statement.
That's what's up.
Thank you.
Good job, Commissioner Benny, congratulations. Pastor Eric, you have any uh commissioner roundtable you wanna include? Okay, brother, you're real nice and swift. My commissioner roundtable is that I would like to have everybody, oh, my Johnson, you back, we gotta get you a seat out here, brother.
Yeah, uh I I wouldn't like to ask uh Commissioner McCormick. Do we have a liaison, and I hear um statement from uh the president? Um do we have a liaison to the Police Department in the sense of uh criminal justice? Because I feel if we had a liaison to the Police Department that we can eliminate a lot of this um what we call gang uh situation.
Mr. Mr. Johnson.
Did you done, Mr. Johnson? Oh, he did, okay, go ahead.
I I just, we, our operation, the way we've been operating is that we have sent a letter to the 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 Chief of Police and ask for a meet uh meet uh meet meet with them and see if we can resolve some issues. Um but if you are put back on education, or I mean on criminal justice, I look, I I would applaud you stepping up, being the person going to the Police Department, and I'll go with you.
I will.
We gonna stand with you, we gonna stand on this issue to the end, but I think more importantly is we just need to see if Ms. Tillman is gonna come back, I'm not here to tell nobody what their positions are, what their title, what they gonna do, whoever our liaison from the council will also help us as well.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
You have any more, uh Commissioner Johnson? I'm good, okay, I'm just gonna make mine quick, cuz we got outsiders wanna speak. I think that we need to make sure we get addressed the criminal gang activity you're speaking of, we need to also pay some attention to um the kids, students immediately getting um expelled from school and sent today at K Smith Center. And other than that, I'm live, I'm happy, I'm glad you guys gonna trust me to be your president. I'm sure we're not gonna agree on everything, but the understanding is always the best thing and best policy. Okay, can we go to um?
Ms. Fay, um Ms. Fay Moore. Um there's a Health and Wellness Fair and Educational Panel by the Michigan City Black History Month Committee. And that actually, that Black History Month Committee actually came out of social status, and so there was we had had discussion about it on last month, about sponsoring the Black History about sponsoring the Black History at the silver level for two hundred and fifty dollars, so can I put a motion on the floor that we because the committee came from us, that we at least give two hundred and fifty dollars to them, and that's my motion on the floor.
She have motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, do a quick roll call.
Um Stacy Benny abstain. Aye. Commissioner Lee, aye. Commissioner Fly.
Nate, I don't know uh what's going on for real.
I sent it.
I know, but when it come to money, I didn't know.
Carol. Commissioner Carol.
Nay.
Commissioner Millsap, Commissioner McCormick.
Nay.
Commissioner Hurt.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
We have one, two, three four, five, I don't know, what'd you vote, Commissioner Carol? No, so we have five in favor so three nays, one abstention, cuz I don't know a lot.
But it seems like motion passed, there's no seem, it did, motion did pass to um give a donation or sponsorship of two hundred and fifty dollars to uh Ms. Ms. Lee's motion. And what is, who is that to, again, the Pacific?
The Michigan City Black History Month Committee.
Okay, thank you, okay, that motion passed, you guys, two hundred and fifty dollars, can we get to public comment? You'll have Mr. Tommy Colavick, if he's still on the phone.
Hey, this is Tommy Colavick from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. If you're looking for volunteer chaperones for the field trip to the Sabo Museum, I'm there for you. I I'll pay my own way and everything, I wanna give a shout out to our Transit Director, Robin Tillman. They're they're she's developing a, they're her nanny mechanic, they're developing a transit app. I said, the app will have GPS, you can just look on your phone, you can track the bus exactly where it's at in the city. And that app's gonna tell you exactly where the bus is uh, when it's gonna arrive, right at your stop down to the minute. And it's also gonna be able to pay your fares mobily, you you all you gotta do is just just buy your twenty dollar pass. And all you gotta do when you get on the bus, just tap your phone and go, it's gonna be really nice. You know, no no more having to handle your cash, and um I wanna piggyback on what uh Commissioner Kenny Fly said about the gang activity. It's more, I'll talk about the graffiti, you know, about probably about twenty years ago, uh there there was a graffiti ordinance put put on our Code of Ordinances, it was uh Mayor Chuck Gobberly really pushed for that. Uh basically, we had, we're we're a graffiti-free community. Uh basically, if what I do when I see any graffiti, I take a picture of it with my cellphone. And I have Facebook message it to the Michigan City Police Department, and the the street department's supposed to come and clean it up, I've been really seeing a big rash of it. You, it's the Bloods, the Crips, the Gangster Disciples, and the Ortino are tagging our territory all over the town. I just seen they 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 tagged the the rear of the the Michigan City Area School Storage Facility across the main field, which is your jewel store. Uh if you deface school property, that's a felony offense. So I just well, well, let you know that uh I'm there for you, thank you, peace out.
Thank you, Tommy, Tommy, appreciate it, and you know, we got Nazis and other kinda gangs also, okay? And we be seeing that the the um dif- graffiti around also. So we just don't wanna say Bloods, Gangster Disciples, we wanna make sure everyone's included in this. Okay, um anymore, anybody else on public comment, looks like access support, that is us, and motion adjourn.
Second.
Good job, guys.